We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we have Pastor Ryan Whitley of the Cavalry Baptist Church. Pastor.
Heavenly Father, we, today, we are humbled by your love. We thank you, God, for just another day alive. But we thank you for these men and women, God, in their love and passion for our city. God, I pray that you'll be with them today. God, I pray that you'll bless them, bless their families, protect their families. But also ask you, Lord, that you give them guidance tonight, Lord, and I pray that you will help us to always remember you and honor you in everything we say and do. Lord, we love you. It's your name we pray. Amen.
Do you want to make a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earl Walters.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Here.
Okay, after many years of service to the city, Ed Bogaster has resigned his position
Sean Bertle.
Here.
Rob Heberling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
on the Board of Appeals, and this creates obviously a vacancy that needs to be filled.
Here.
Seven aldermen present, one absent. First thing we have is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings and public hearings listed on tonight's agenda under the title, And I believe I found the very capable, and almost as important, a willing candidate Omnibus Vote Designation. to fill that vacancy. We have a motion by Alderman Dortchinez, second by Alderman Heberling, I believe. With the city council's approval, I would like to appoint Mr. Bob Phibus to that position. Discussion or comment? Roll call, please. So I'd entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Salute.
Rob Heberling.
Second.
Yes.
Alderman Dortchinez, second by Alderman Heberling, discussion or comments?
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Bruce Jones. Martin Voda.
Yes.
Yes.
Ray Coontz. Earl Walters.
Yes.
Yes.
Martin Voda. Larry Bud.
Yes.
Yes.
Earl Walters. Bobby.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Larry Bud.
Okay, the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the public hearing held
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And that's City Clerk Pam P. Bobby to swear the new member in.
Since you've been swearing, I'm going to see you.
July 21st, 2014, minutes of the regular meeting held July 21st, 2014, minutes of the Public
Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the
Facilities Committee meeting held July 24th, 2014, minutes of the Street and Sewer Committee meeting held July 24th, 2014, minutes of the public hearing held July 31st, 2014, and
Constitution of Illinois, and that you expressly discharge the duties of a member of the Board of Appeals to which you were appointed according to the best of your ability?
minutes of the special city council meeting held July 31st, 2014. I think they'll find you very... Okay, next on the agenda, we have a resolution that's regarding the intergovernmental cooperation I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Alderman Coontz, second.
Second.
Alderman Bud, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
agreement between the city and May Township in regards to borrowed equipment. Alderman Walters, can I get a second?
Yes.
Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And that's City Clerk Pam P. Bobby to swear the new member in.
Since you've been swearing, I'm going to see you. Do you solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Illinois, and that you expressly discharge the duties of a member of the Board of Appeals to which you were appointed according to the best of your ability?
Thank you. I think they'll find you very... Okay, next on the agenda, we have a resolution that's regarding the intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city and May Township in regards to borrowed equipment. Alderman Walters, can I get a second?
Yes.
Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Brings us to City Attorney updates.
Gentlemen, I have six items I want to address briefly with you. First is the enterprise zone issue. The mayor and I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow at 2:00 with the county board chairman, at his request, by the way, and to further our discussions so that he can take it to his committee, I think, on Wednesday. So hopefully we'll have some favorable news as a result of that meeting. Secondly, with respect to your Illinois EPA litigation that's going on with Laker and CAM, I have spoken with the IEPA attorney, Assistant Attorney General. She is agreeable to scheduling another settlement discussion meeting, this time with myself and her president, along with whoever wants to attend. I think Mr. Alderman Voda and the mayor will certainly be there, to see if we can't get some finality and get some settlement numbers for that. She's going to be checking with her folks, send me a list of available dates, I'll share that with the mayor, and then we'll come back and see what meeting date we can come up with. The third item is on this East Vine property. If you recall, I had prepared an affidavit, and Mr. Brackett, the yellow bracket, is one of the heirs of the property. He's been very cooperative. He has filled out an affidavit, and he has indicated a willingness to sign a document that I can prepare that will give the consent to tear it down without going to court. He doesn't know all his siblings, you know, the ownership and where they're all located. And so I'm going to throw something out to you. It's not on your agenda to vote tonight, but you know, there's risk in everything we do in life. So this is one that you might want to take. We can go to court and go the long way and get the court blessing to tear this down. But if Mr. Brackett is willing to sign a document saying, "These are the people I know of. You have my consent as an owner, and I'll hold you harmless and indemnify you," which may or may not, you know, have the financial backing, but allow us to quickly get in there and tear it down and just kind of wait and see whether or not the actual owners would even have any complaints about it. And that's a risk, but it's something that I think, unless any of you have any problem with that, that's the direction I think we're going to move. And we actually placed a call, a confirmation call with Mr. Brackett today. He didn't, wasn't able to return the call to me yet, but George has spoken with him, and he seems very cooperative. So we're going to work in that direction unless someone raises a lot of issue about that. Yes, Mr. Coontz.
Your Honor, I fully would support that being in my Mr. Bud's board. I just would ask that, I'm sure George is on top of this, that we just take some pictures or something before.
Oh, yeah.
That way, somewhere down the line, if it ever comes up, we can show that there is no intrinsic value at all to that building that we tore down, just to make sure we do that.
We'll do the best to cover our bases, I assure you on that. And we hope, you can't take any action tonight, but we're going to move in that direction unless someone sends, sends an email to the mayor and says, "Stop," you know, whatever. So hopefully, by next meeting, let's hope that we will be having a motion to ratify the actions being done. That's what we're going to try to do, to kind of expedite this. Okay? The other issue is, I have met with Mr. Bonister of the Credit Collection Partners. We had a very good meeting. He went on vacation last week, so he shared some more documents with me. We're going to meet again and try to finalize that assignment of the ordinance violations over, and he and I were in agreement on some things that we were discussing. So I don't have anything for you tonight, but we will soon. Also, I did get, as I told you before, I've not heard anything from Amherst attorneys about our suggested revisions. I did get a voicemail, pretty detailed one, from Ted Berkoff, who said, "He has sent our suggested revisions to their attorneys, and they have it in the queue," as he put it. "There's about thirty other similar type requests." So we're in line to get a response, and he, according to his voicemail, he was letting me know when we hear from something. And then last, you have been sued by Jamal Shahada that was filed on July 29, 2014. The Taylorville Police Department and the city clerk's office have been sued as the defendants. Pam has a copy, I think it's a forty-six page complaint. We have spoken with your insurance carrier, Travelers. We have turned the claim over to them, and the adjuster is, we've been playing telephone tag today, so I'll hopefully be talking to her tomorrow to discuss this in some detail. Simply put, it seems to be, as I read the document, I don't want to get too much into the merits of it, he seems to be complaining that he's not getting the documents that he's already been sent. And I don't know if things have crossed in the mail or what have you, but it'll be dealt with in due course and in an appropriate manner. But you have been sued, so, yes, Mr. Walters.
Alderman Walters.
If it's possible, I'd like to read the forty-six page document.
Pam has got a copy, and if you want me to send it by email, I'll be happy, or stop by my office and send me a copy.
I'll stop by your office.
All right. It'll be ready for you tomorrow, okay? Very good. That's it, gentlemen.
Anyone else have any questions for City Attorney? Alderman Heberling.
On the Shahada thing.
Yes, sir.
I thought we got some relief from the courts.
We did, but these are subs... You're absolutely, that's a good question, we have. I've lost count of the number of FOIA requests that we've gotten, but there has been additional FOIA requests since that court arrangement was made.
So that previous arrangement doesn't cover...
Doesn't cover these recent FOIA requests. And if you, when you look at the complaint, and I'm getting fan mail from Mr. Shahada, and I think the clerk is too, that I'm commenting too much while he's sitting there listening or whatever, he gets his information. But as I read it, he asked us in the last FOIA request that for purposes of copying charges, I don't want to be called a recurrent requester, and I'm asking seven or eight different things. Well, we treat him as a recurrent requester. Instead of doing it in five business days, we gave him the documents in twenty-one business days, he's got the documents. Even at his request, he wanted something made into a CD, which we did, and the city clerk has mailed it out to the address that he asked for. So we're, I'm surprised to get the lawsuit, but we have it, and we'll have to deal with it, and we will in due course, so, okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Very good.
Move on to mayor updates, and I've just got two, two things to touch on. First, I'm happy to say I was fortunate enough to play in this year's Tornado Open Golf Tournament, which certainly appeared to be another successful one. You know, that's been a tremendous fundraiser for our local sports teams. Now, our team consists of myself, George Calvert, Ben Winans, City Attorney Rocky Romano, City Engineer Joe Green, and Reggie Benton of Benton and Associates. And we all played relatively well despite not bringing home any trophies. But I, I did want to dispel a rumor that possibly could emerge out of this thing. If you've ever played in that before, you know, as part of the fundraising effort, you can choose to buy a raffle ticket at these par threes for five dollars. Now, for the five dollars, you receive one ticket that goes into the possible drawing, and some of these players, they also have a drink that they can give you. And most of these drinks are, a lot of them are, have some alcohol in them. Now, I don't drink alcohol usually.
Usually?
Yep. It was starting to get warm later in that day on one of the later par threes, and they had lemonade there. So I said, "Well, it's small, very small glass of lemonade," and that reportedly had some vodka in it, so I drank that. So, so then I got up to my par three and hit the ball, and it was a little bit offline. Maybe a football field width or so, nothing terrible. But all of a sudden, one of the players from my own team immediately shouted out, "Oh, great, now he's drunk." From that point on, I was continuously harassed by this individual on every shot that I hit that wasn't desirable. So I don't want to out this individual so he shall remain nameless, George. But I just wanted to set the record straight. Your mayor was not drunk. He's just not a great golfer. Secondly, I want to remind everyone about Taylorville and Christian County's 175th Anniversary Celebration that's coming up in about two months now. You know, we've got some commemorative souvenirs that are now being sold, and I urge everyone interested that would like to own a piece of local history, you have your opportunity to start buying them right now. We've got them for sale, you know, at the Chamber of Commerce, the Christian County Courthouse, at the Chairman of the Board's Office, a Taylorville monogram, and you can also get them at the Christian County Historical Society. Now, there's a sweatshirt, t-shirts, lapel pin, a cup, a thermos, I believe, a water bottle, and so, now, these things are, you know, even though they're available, they're in limited numbers, so you have to operate quickly. One thing I did want to hit on is the license plates, and you know, that's something that there's a very limited number of, two hundred total, and we've already sold quite a few of them, but you know, you'll be able to start putting them on the cards here within the next week or ten days or so. And, and so those numbers will dwindle pretty quickly. So that's two hundred, not just for the city of Taylorville, but across Christian County. So I think those will become very collectible very quickly, and so I just urge you, if you're interested in buying something like that, to hand down to the kids or just to keep, you know, you better get your order in quickly. That's all I've got, unless someone else has something for me. Alderman Coontz.
I have a question for the city attorney.
It wasn't me that said that. It was George.
What's the real storyline of golfing? Who was the better, the better golfer out of you guys?
Well, it wasn't George.
Any other serious questions? Let's move on to committee reports. Discussions and/or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part to matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. And we start off with Street and Sewer Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a number of motions this evening, gentlemen, so I'll try to get through those, so bear with me. First motion I'd like to make is to reimburse Bo Anderson $675 for sewer location expenses on his property at 605 West First Street.
Okay, second, Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Roll call.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Motion passes.
Next motion I'll make is to approve the second annual 5K run, Fun Run Walk, Take the Girls Out for a Run, sponsored by Taylorville Memorial Hospital in cooperation with the Taylorville Cups Wine Event for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I want to make a change to the date, gentlemen. I received a note from the hospital and also talked to Janelle Ford. She says the Taylorville Memorial Hospital in cooperation with TCWE is sponsoring its second annual 5K Fun Run Walk, which was to be held on Saturday, September the 20th, and will now be rescheduled to October the 18th, 2014. The date of the event has changed due to unportioned medical reasons beyond our control. So my motion would be with the new date of October the 18th, 2014, at 8:00 a.m.
Okay, motion by Alderman Walters. Second, Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment?
Assume you've discussed his special event permit.
Yeah, okay, we got that covered. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next motion is to allow Langen Farms Incorporated to cut down and clean up one tree at 310 Richmond Avenue at a cost of $400 to be paid by the property owner.
Alderman Walters, got a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Heberling, discussion. Alderman Dortchinez.
Is this the Babs property that... Yes, it is. Okay. This tree's on, on city property, right? Yes, it is. Okay. This is the same property that, and this, this is the gumball tree cutting down? Yes, it is. Part of this time, this came to the tree board when Rhonda Kraft was the chairman of the tree board. Yes, it did. And the recommendation was made to not cut it down, was it not? Yes, it was. All right, and so then it came to the council, and the council agreed. It did not cut, cut it down. All right, that was several months ago, if not a year ago or more. Now it's come back, Rhonda Kraft is no longer on the tree board, lost a couple of more members, and it seems like from the requests that are coming before us tonight, there's not one tree that the recommendation is to cut it down, and, and we're going along with that recommendation so far. The council hasn't voted on it tonight, but we got a motion in a second to cut this tree down. Previously, it was not to cut it down, and has something transpired in that length of time to have the tree board change their mind or the council to change their mind tonight? Yes, it has. Would it be that the reason is that the gumballs are going in the sewer? Well, two, if I may, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters.
About two reasons. First of all, the first time around, all the tree board members did not go out and look at the site, and, and the second reason is we continue to have problems with the gumballs going down the storm sewer that is part of our city renovation projects at the southeast corner of the intersection there where the Babs' property is.
And on the, come on, I'll make the other thing that I believe has changed, is the fact that in the previous request, I don't know that the owner ever offered to pick up the expense of having it cut down and to replace it with another tree, and that's one thing I want to make sure and possibly amend this with. My understanding in all the talks we've had was, you know, the thing that was different is if we're going to lose a tree, you're going to replace it with a tree. I mean, if it's being replaced with one that's more desirable or acceptable by the descriptions or the type set up by our, our tree committee, I think that's something more tolerable. The other thing was, I did go out and take a look at it, and it was, it is starting to raise that sidewalk on the one side. Now, you know, how long does it go before, you know, it gets to be a problem? It's raised at about an inch or so right now. It might be good for another twenty years or so before that sidewalk breaks there, but you know, I think, I think the bottom line is, we, we've got a certain number of trees that are undesirable in the city. In fact, we've got lots of them, and we, we spend thousands of dollars every year, you know, taking them out on, you know, because they're, they're far too large and everything else. So as part of a long-term plan, we do want to replace the trees with something that is appropriate for it. And, and so I think that's what the big thing is here, a combination of the fact that we've always had our street and sewer superintendent saying he's concerned about what's going in the sewer problem. Now add on the fact that, hey, we don't have a lot of money, and we've got the homeowner willing to pick up the cost of cutting the tree and putting a new one in, and at least for me, that, that did make it different as far as considering what to do with that. So I hope that answers your questions a little bit.
It, it, it's an answer that doesn't satisfy me. You know, we got, we also have leaves going in the sewers. So you know, you can use the same rationale then, that you've got gumballs going in there causing problems. We've also got leaves going in the, in the sewers causing problems. And so therefore, if you've got a tree that's got a leaf on it, maybe that's a good reason to cut it down, if you can afford to cut it down yourself. I mean, that's, that's my reasoning based upon what you said. You know, one of, one of the things that we've, we've struggled with is that... There's, there's people that would say, "Okay, cut down a tree, there's less leaves, there's less leaves, there's less burning." Okay, so I'm all for it, let's cut them all down. You know, and we, and we've said in the past, and we have on different issues, we've looked at individual issues and made decisions, sometimes in favor of, of an issue, and then the next time, we're opposed to the issue. Well, you know, I, I respect Rhonda Kraft and the tree board, the members that were on that committee at that time, and, and when they said that the tree was healthy and didn't want to cut it down, and, and it did not get cut down, and now we've come back and, and said, "We're going to, we're going to reverse ourselves," and, and to me, the, the reasons aren't appropriate for reversing our decision. But it also looks like to me that there've been other people that have, have come along before the council and the tree board, and they've had gumball problems, and we've also turned them down in the past. Maybe we ought to get a list of those people and notify them that things have changed, and maybe they can come before us, too. I think it's a bad idea to cut these trees down, and so I'm against it.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Were you asking the alderman to amend his motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. Do you want, I can, I will ask that, will you amend that this also includes that another tree will be planted in place of the one that's absent?
Yes.
And, and that will also be at their cost. I mean, again, if we find out now they're not going to do it, then we might have, yeah, bring it back yet again.
Call him in on the motion.
Okay. Can I get a sec? Alderman Heberling, will you amend your second? Discussion or comment on that? Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Rodney Dortchinez.
No.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
No.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
Next motion I'll make is the motion to allow Langen Farms Incorporated to take down and clean up two trees at 1021 West Poclar Street at a cost of $1,300 to be paid by the city.
Can I get a second on that?
Yes.
Second, Alderman Coontz.
Question.
Alderman Bud, question.
Langen Farms on that, why would that name be there?
Because they're the ones that, well, they're the one that Dick has contacted that's got the lowest price for taking them down. The city's been using them.
Okay, so they're, the other one, Richmond, they're paying for this?
Right, right, right. Because they want to. Again, it's not the city deciding the tree needs to come down, or at least it's not imperative that it comes down, in our opinion. It's, but it's what they want to do. Alderman Dortchinez.
Why are we taking these trees down?
Well, again, these, these, now, these I did get pictures of, and if you go down and take a look at these, these really are having huge problems with the sidewalk on both sides. It's buckled up five or six inches on these. The boulevard there is very narrow, probably less than three foot wide, and the trees are three and a half foot wide, and, and it, it's definitely going to cause a problem, you know, there. It's a liability for us, and again, it's one of those things that you can't have the sidewalk there where it is.
Well, would, would it make more sense to, and I don't know the answer to this, would it make more sense to reroute the sidewalk around the tree rather than cut that tree down at that expense?
Well, it might be, but then you have to talk to each, each owner when we have those situations and ask them, "Can we now go onto your property and put our sidewalk on your property?" Because there's no easement there.
Oh, that's good.
Well, I mean, that's, that's fine. I'm not sure the homeowner, if they've got a major problem with it or not, but I knew it was causing those problems.
I, Dick, I don't know if you've got a thought on that? I mean, they're, they're pretty good sized trees. You mean to, to actually go into somebody's yard, come around it? And then even though it's in their yard, I ask the city attorney, does that cause any problem liability wise? It's now on their property and.
It is, you need an easement.
Alderman Coons.
Question from Mr. Bud, uh, are those, the one that we're talking about now, I believe, is that the tree that's kinda dying and it's.
One of them is dying, appears to be.
It's, it's gonna come down eventually here, one way or another, per se.
Yeah, there's part of it that's already dead.
Alderman Zeller.
Is the, the thirteen hundred dollars, is that coming out of general fund or is that coming out of the ward's, uh, the ward's money to maintain streets and?
Well, hi- historically, what have we done on tree removal, Dick? I'd answer. Any other question before we go?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until such time as, uh, someone can investigate the easement issue and I'd be willing to do that.
Motion to table by Alderman Dorchinez, is her second? Going once, second, going twice.
I'll second it.
Alderman Jones, okay, roll call on the motion to table.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
No.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
No.
Martin Boda.
No.
Earl Walters.
No.
Larry Bud.
No.
Okay, the motion to table fails, uh, two in favor and five against it. So now the regular motion is still on the table, so, uh, let's take a roll call on it.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
No.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
No.
Motion passes five to two.
Next motion I'll make, your honors, motion to approve the use of available MFT funds to extend the East Lakeshore Drive asphalt from the spillway bridge project to the existing asphalt on the east side of the bridge.
Alderman Walters makes that motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Alderman Bud, discussion or comment?
Question, your honor.
Alderman Boda.
What's the total amount we're spending on this, uh, the, uh, MFT?
I'd have to.
Nine thousand dollars.
Okay, and this is one hundred percent out of MFT, nothing to do with ward funds at all in this? Okay, thank you.
Now, the same money that we used for, uh, Cherokee Street.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions? Roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next motion I'll make is to approve the tree board minutes of July the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment? All those in favor? Against, motion passes.
Next motion I'll make is to approve the request of Eric and Alarete Kael to remove a crabapple tree on the boulevard at five eleven East Heights Avenue at their expense.
Second.
Second, Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment on this?
This one didn't go to the tree board?
Alderman.
Yes.
Alderman Dor- Dorchinez first.
I'm sorry.
I, I, I'm assuming the crabapples are going in the sewer, causing a problem, is that right, Mr. Wiseman?
All I know is the people done cut the tree down. They didn't wait to just cut it down.
Or the, or the, now they're cutting them down ahead of the council?
They did, they cut it down way before we even know it.
Heard of an alderman doing that.
Wow. Well, I guess I'm, I'm for cutting this one down. I might as well be on the winning side if it's, if it's already done. I, I, they can't put it back, right? It's impossible.
They're gonna find the tree back, yes. Next motion on the next page.
Any other comments?
Mister, well, yeah, I have a question, I got the floor. Mister Ramano, do we have any recourse, uh, about this tree?
You do, but it's, it's moot if they're gonna, if you're gonna require them to put a new replacement in there. You'd be questioning the value of the tree that was torn down versus the replacement one, so, uh, I don't recommend that you pay me to look into it.
I was gonna make that a mention too.
But you're right.
My dad used to.
It is a violation, it would be subject to a fine.
Well, I'm talking about maybe, uh, for example, my dad, uh, had a green thumb and, uh, he could, um, he could graft a lot of trees. Um, in fact, he had one fruit tree in Southern Illinois, had five different fruits on it. Um, so, is, the, the tree is gone, probably away that it could not be grafted back, is that true, Mister Wiseman? You don't even have any idea where the tree is.
All I know is it's gone.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yeah.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
No, I'm not gonna approve the request.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Next motion I'll make, your honors, to approve the request of Eric and Alarete Kael to plant a ginkgo tree on the boulevard at five eleven East Heights Avenue.
Okay, can I go a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment?
I do.
Alderman Dorchinez.
I think they ought to be required to, to plant another crabapple tree, bigger than the one they put in. They took out.
I don't know if that's on our list from the tree board. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
No.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Next motion I'll make, your honors, to approve the request of Gerald McPhillips to have a dead tree removed at seven hundred West Vine's Leaf, the southwest corner of Vine and Chumley at the city's expense due to the size.
Can I get a second on that one? Alderman Coons, discussion or con- comments?
Is, is it really a dead tree?
It's dead.
I, I.
You wanna graft it?
Roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
No.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Point of clarification, mayor, on the pre- previous motion, I assume that was at the cable's expense?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, uh, we, now we have a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Alderman Bud, can I get a second? Alderman Walters, go ahead, Alderman Bud. Comments?
Comment first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Bud.
Uh, your honor, on, uh, page twenty-six, item, uh, for the Farm Pride tractor, I'd like to have that pulled and loaded on separately, please.
Okay.
And to make it easy on Mister Bud, the total would then become two hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Sixteen sixty-eight. Okay, uh, Alderman Bud, will you amend your initial motion to that new amount?
Yes.
And Alderman Walters, amend your second? Okay, any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, uh, I guess we're gonna make a separate motion on the Farmall tractor at the cost of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, I'd entertain a motion to approve payment of that bill.
Second.
Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coons.
No.
Martin Boda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Motion passes five to two. Okay, you, you go ahead with your comments, Alderman Bud, you got some?
Yep. Insurance, one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and thirteen cents, healthcare tax, three thousand, two hundred and thirty-six oh one. KMREM, general liability insurance, seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-six. Meyer, Aston, and Ramano, returning fees, six thousand, real estate tax rebate, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven ninety-seven. Electric, two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two oh one. Garbage, two thousand, five hundred and twelve thirty-five. Unique temporary health, two thousand, five hundred and fifty-five eighteen. Police and fire uniform allowance, one thousand, three hundred and four oh eight. Police and fire training, two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine forty-seven. Fire department for municipal supply equipment, two thousand, six hundred and nineteen ninety. Street department, Bodine Electric for signal light repairs, three thousand, seventy-seven forty. Gimpers for rain vest and safety vest, one thousand, five hundred and ninety-four seventy. Flint Trading, crosswalk tape for Cherokee at the North School, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five twenty-one. Lewis Marsh, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six ninety-six. Sherman Williams, one thousand, one hundred and nineteen seventy-two. Water Department Chemicals, eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eighty-nine. Midwest Meter for supplies, one thousand, five hundred and forty-eight seventy-six. PDC, lab supplies, water tests, one thousand, two hundred and two fifty. US, uh, United States Post Office, posties, one thousand. Max Core, Cherokee Tower, final payment, sixty-three thousand, ninety. Sewer Department, EJ Equipment and for parts and repairs, six thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven seventeen. Vandevere Engineering for maintenance, two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven seventy-nine. And Phil, Phil Tollis for the Oak Street Alley Repair, uh, manhole, two thousand, six hundred and fifty. And then Lake Department for the Farmall, forty-five A Moore, twelve thousand, five hundred. These totaled to two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four twenty.
Thank you. Okay, about a week ago, last Sunday, week ago Sunday, um, you know, we had the building on the northeast corner of the square. We already voted on it, we voted on it early and then I asked you to give your things. Cause we voted on the new amount, remember?
It's okay, he's got control.
All right, um, anyway, the, what I wanted to do tonight was, uh, you know, give some of the, uh, business owners downtown, building owners downtown, a chance to kind of hear this discussion. The owner of the building, uh, was gracious enough to be here tonight, uh, his name is Dustin Clark. Dustin, you wanna raise your hand there and let everybody know who you are? Uh, he, Dustin has been, been very accommodating as far as returning phone calls and, and, and talking with us and being very up front about it. George can tell you that usually that's not the experience we have, unfortunately. It's hard to track people down something and have a good discussion with them, but Dustin has been, uh, uh, very good to, to work with so far. I, I don't wanna put you on the spot too much, but if you feel comfortable, could, could you tell us a little bit about what direction you think you might be heading in?
Okay, well, first off, I wanna thank the city, uh, fire and, uh, you know, the private business owners for, um, dealing with this, this circumstance. As of right now, there's, it's kind of a holding pattern with the insurance. We've had, the insurance had a, a structural engineer come out, uh, not their, you know, not their, they hired a, a separate engineer to come out and fix the situation over. And, uh, the good news is that I got was that they, they feel that it's structurally sound and it is repairable. With that being said, I bought that building to rent back, you know, I, I, my first goal was to get businesses in, in, in the lower part. And I would, I would like to eventually put apartments in above it. I want to rebuild that, uh, building. Right now, I'm waiting on masons, I've had, I've had numerous masons come in. They, they stated it is structurally sound enough to, to rebuild, okay? But I am waiting on their cost of, you know, what, what it's been a cost to, to do. Will it be financially beneficial? I do not wanna tear that building, so.
Okay. Do you have, and again, the question obviously we're gonna have is, at this point, do you have any timeline at all, when you might have those answers?
Basically, uh, first off, I, I wanna make sure that it's going forward and, and, and shoring and, uh, safety is, is the biggest concern right now. Okay, that's what the structural engineer, you know, that's, you know, that was the first step. Second step is the masons that I had come in to get this bid on, on shoring and, and, you know, obviously make sure nothing else is, is, uh, gonna come down and hurt somebody.
Okay.
That's gonna happen. I, I do have that bid, I did get that, I got that today, I got it to my adjuster and he's, we're, we're moving forward with that part of it to get it safe. More safe than it is right now.
The, the debris that's on the sidewalk and roadway right now, is, is there some point where you expect the insurance company will, will say that's okay to go ahead and, and at least clean that, that part up?
Part of the bid.
Okay.
The, the masons will come in, uh, the mason I had come in, he's from St. Louis, uh, he deals with this stuff on a daily basis. He loves the building, he, you know, he really like, he's seen my, he, he has the same vision I do. I wanna restore it to, to natural, but obviously costs. He, what, what they do now is they obviously go up with an eight-inch block and then put a, a, a brick face on it. What they'll do is they'll take all the bricks that are from the building, clean them and, and they'll reuse those, those bricks, uh, the, the ones that are reusable.
Sure.
So, that's part of their bid, they'll take and clean all the bricks, stack them for future use.
Okay. And I don't know if you'll be able to answer this or not, I mean, I'm certainly not a, a structural engineer, but if someone asked me the question, if these bricks fell because the mortar was, was no longer strong and, and would hold it, what, what makes us think that the rest of the mo- mo- mortar in, in the building i- is in better shape or do you have to re?
Well, it'll.
Redo the whole thing?
It'll be a, a total renovation, I mean, they're, and.
Tuck point.
Tuck point everything, if, you know, it will, it will be safe before, you know, obviously that's my number one, is safety, uh, too. So, they'll go in, you know, obviously they'll have to have the engineer design columns and supports, but I don't have, I, I personally don't have the, uh, report from the structural engineer. And I don't know that, you know, who has that, has it up right now, but he will deem what he's done to make this building safe.
Okay. Question for, for the city attorney, again, do you feel comfortable, I know you reviewed some of our current ordinances, uh, some of the, uh, stuff in our, the bulk of code that we, uh, have adopted. Are, do you think we're on solid legal ground to, to hire our own engineer to take a look or do you have an opinion on that at this point?
You, you have that authority to do that. I think we've briefly talked about it too, you also have the statutory authority to work with the, the owner, if you will. Uh, which might aid him to kind of nudge his, comfort of the insurance company a little bit to get moving with this. I mean, I think from the, from the city's standpoint, um, and you probably can't answer that tonight, is what is a realistic timetable? We have businesses that can't get to their places because the streets are shut off. And are we talking, you know, a couple of weeks for these people to come in and do some things? You know, what the city has the power to do and, and there are no threats here at all, but is, is that if we're, you know, if we have to, we can ask the court here to get involved and set some timetables to kind of move everybody in the right direction that if it, uh, either it gets repaired or it gets demolished, one of the two, and to get the thing up and off the street. So, before they push that button, I, I think we need you to help kind of guide us as to what is your timeframe. And with some authority from your company and the structural engineer and the masons, because of, because if we, uh, don't have that information at hand and the city may be forced to actually, let's get it into, let somebody else to kind of push us along and get a timetable we can all live with.
And, you know, obviously, you know, like the insurance companies, you know, you're dealing with, but, uh, I, I do have a good feeling, uh, with the people that I have. They, they feel everyone's concerns, you know, and I'm pushing, you guys obviously have stated, you know, you've spoken with them and, and I feel like we're going in the right direction. And as far as, as far as, as soon as we get this shoring and, and I get the prices, you know, obviously the prices are what's gonna ultimately, uh, say whether. As soon as I get those, that's whenever we'll definitely have the. And, and I, I, I think by the end of the week, we'll, we'll know a lot, a lot more, uh, which direction we came in.
I think one question the mayor has, this is where we're heading here, is that if and when you would get your report from the structural engineers, whether or not that can be shared with the city so we have some sense of some confidence that, that there isn't no longer a safety issue.
If not. As soon as I know something, it's going straight to me.
Okay.
And we discussed, as soon as, as soon as I know something, we were gonna have to sit down with every vice fire chief and, and mayor and we're, you know, we're gonna share everything, you know?
And, and just for instance, if, let's say they wouldn't share that information with you, I don't know why they would, but let's assume they did. You're willing to give a consent if the city council wants to, is to hire their own structural engineer with your consent to go in and make some assessment?
I think I, I don't know if I spoke with you, but I was willing to hire my own structural engineer if that didn't happen quick enough. You know, because I, I've been, you know, I, I hate that it happened, I hate that it's affecting, you know, my business owners down there. I hate that it's affecting, uh, business owners on the square, so I'm trying, you know, everything I can to get this resolved as quickly as possible.
I did have a, a talk with an insurance agent and it was interesting the way he kind of explained the situation here and this might be for some of the other business owners. It, it might be good for you to contact your individual insurance carriers and, and discuss the situation with them if, if you've got a problem. The way he described it, the analogy he used was if you had a tree in your backyard, a healthy tree in your backyard, and the wind comes along and blows that tree over into your neighbor's yard and causes damage. The insurance company, your insurance company's not responsible for that, you know, uh, because that was a healthy tree, no wind, uh, you know, there was no will for a wanton neglect on, on that, the homeowner's side that made that tree do that. So, your insurance has to take care of that, not the homeowners. Now, if that tree itself is, uh, dying, if there's branches broken loose and, and then they come over, then you have liability there and then your insurance company has to step forward and make the pay. He, in his opinion, it is, was a similar situation with this building here. That building is not a lot different than the majority of those buildings on the square. And because of that, no, no business owner, uh, would probably have known that there was a potential for this type of thing to happen. And based on that, that's why the insurance company explained to me, they're stepping forward and they will cover this. Had there been neglect or something by him, they would've been the first ones to step up and say, uh-uh, we're out of this one. You know, you, you did, you knew this was wrong and, and you didn't do anything and, and they say that is not the case here, so, I think that's important. Alderman Walters.
Thank you, uh, I just happen to have a little bit of background with insurance, having been in the business for almost thirty years. And none of these cases involving commercial buildings like this are ever easy to resolve. They take months sometimes to work through the different bodies that you have to go through to get the, the resolution. The key is always gonna be the money, how much the building is insured for. That's all they're gonna be paying. So, uh, and I appreciate, uh, your, your remarks on, on what the cost would be. They're only gonna give you so many dollars. If it costs this many dollars, you get this many dollars, it's not gonna be feasible for you to do it unless you've got some deep pockets. And so, at this point, we know that we have concerns, I'm gonna try to, to help the business owners around the square, especially from that corner, to be able to open back up. But to be able to tell exactly the shape of that building, all that metal facade is gonna have to come off. Also, you're on a zero lot line, so if you're talking about putting extra bricks on the outside of those bricks, you can't do that because you come on our city property, our sidewalks. You've gotta rebuild it within the actual dimensions of the building that's, that is there now. So the repairs would have to be made by taking all those bricks off, if you're talking about putting eight-inch bricks on top of those, or you're gonna have to repair it from the inside. So that's another concern that I have on that also. And also, if you're gonna, uh, tuck point the building, that size building is gonna take either one humongous, large crew or it's gonna take a smaller crew, weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks to take the old mortar out and put the, the new mortar in and tap it in place and repair the bricks that are bad. And, and we can appreciate that, but we'd have to be moved along fairly well. We're coming into our fall season for the city of Taylorville merchants and the. We're coming into our fall season for the City of Taylorville merchants and the Christmas season and the events that we have. We've okayed a number of events for Taylorville Main Street that we're gonna be holding on the square, as well as the ongoing farmer's market. We have the Chili Fest coming up. We have the 175th anniversary coming up. And these are all things that are vital to our downtown area and to our square. So, we wanted to see if we can push this along in a timely manner to get this accomplished, so that we don't have to go to Plan B, because right now we don't have a Plan B. So, I've also talked in conjunction with the mayor this morning, I did it to bring color copies for everyone, but I'd like to see if we can get together and American work this out with the street department. I'd like to look at the center line of East Main Cross, and you're going in a westerly direction on East Main Cross. Follow me now, folks, in front of Brokman's office. I'd like to put those barricades back at the halfway point of the street. So, we would leave the north side of East Main Cross, one-way direction, only going west. Follow me so far? That would allow the traffic to go that direction and come onto the square. I'd also like to remove the barricades on North Main Street that start at P.S. Printing and goes down to the alley, because there's no damage that could happen down through there unless the whole building collapses. So, that would allow P.S. Printing to have their business restored. It would also allow Bill's Toci Shop to function again. We could allow parking on both sides of that street. So, we'd have northbound traffic going past P.S. Printing and making the turn, going on down to City Hall. We would have southbound traffic on North Main Street, going south past City Hall, coming to the square corner, and making a right-hand turn only, follow me, to go around the square. Would not be able to make a left-hand turn to go down Main Street in an easterly direction. Then I'd like to have also on the square, as you're going on the east side of the square, in a northerly direction around the square, we would still barricade all parking spaces on the inside of the square, the courthouse side of the square, for about half the distance from the sidewalk that goes to the courthouse, where the door doesn't open, down to where the sidewalk goes at an angle to the courthouse on the south corner. That allows extra room to make that turn for traffic. So, if I'm traveling that direction around the square, and I wanna make a left-hand turn, I'm free to do that, continue around the square. But if I also want to go past P.S. Printing in a northerly direction, I'll be able to do that. But I would not be able to make a right-hand turn and go in an easterly direction on Main Street. I have it laid out on the map, because I had to pass it around for all of you to look at with red arrows to show on there. That would take that debris back in an area that would go to the alley behind Jack Grady's building. I call, that's why I call it, because I'm an old timer, Jack Grady's building. And we would block it off all the way around in a curved area as it comes onto the square, and go down to the south wall, thereabouts of the, what I call the Clark Building. We firmly barricaded off with tape and so forth. We'd have no pedestrians walking in through there. We'd have no car traffic, no parking whatsoever. That would allow these merchants to stay in business, folks. We've got to protect these merchants to be able to stay in business in this community, because we're hurting for businesses right now. And this would allow them to stay in business. It would show that there's cooperation from the Clark family, and there's cooperation from the city council in trying to accomplish this. So, that would be what I'd like to present to the council, and I'd be happy to pass this around if you guys wanna look at this or the media wants to look at it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments from the aldermen? Alderman Kuntz?
Just a couple things, Your Honor. Kind of a sense question, but I have to ask, you know, just to make sure. Are your utilities in that building on certain locations and are often certain ones, or are they all totally? Second question I have, Your Honor, is would the Sam Taylor Fund play to affect any of this as far as the thing we have with Main Street?
I mean, if he wanted to do some facade work when he gets close to the end of it, I guess he could put in a request to cover some of it, but it's not very much in that Sam Taylor Fund that, you know, because just for front footage, if I believe is how that works, and I think the maximum amount was seventy-five hundred dollars. So, in theory, you might be able to get it up to seventy-five hundred dollars, but that would be about it, I believe. But-
I gave everybody a sheet here that I had questions with, and I gave one to the attorney and all the aldermen and that. The other day, there was people entering the tattoo shop, and it's still my understanding there's bricks falling from that building. You know, what is the risk for people crossing that yellow tape and going in and out of that building? Is the city at risk for that? We need to somehow stop that, other than if it's somebody of a structural engineer going in to try to make a determination on that building. Also, on that Sunday that the building collapsed, I was told that the fire department somehow or another put some straps onto that facade to try to keep it from blowing any more than it was. And if anybody was there that day, it was really moving back and forth. And the only thing that's holding that is at the very tip-top. It was really moving back. With that, are we at risk with that? I mean, because I was there, I've seen it.
We did the strapping, so we are at risk.
You know, well, that's what I was told. Also, it's my understanding that the height of the building times one and a half is the danger zone of that building. That puts the businesses on the north side of that building at risk. And those businesses are struggling as it's been. And today, I don't know, this quarter after eight or so, Gloria and I were walking, and there was an elderly couple that parked there on North, on Main Street here. They both were getting out of the car, and we thought they were gonna actually park there. Well, he was getting out to help her, and she wanted to use the beauty shop just right next door to P.S. Printing. You know, and that is an inconvenience to them, plus it's an inconvenience to the people going to that business. It's an inconvenience to their, we need to move on this sooner than later. The support wall that was put up by the City of Springfield Fire Department that day, that's up there. Are we responsible now for some liability for that support wall drawn to hold that north wall?
Yes.
You call them in to help?
Under mutual aid, sir, we would be.
Yeah, I mean, it was nice of them. They knew what to do at the time. I mean, I watched them put it all up. And then, again, there's bricks continuing to fall off this building, and that facade on that one side needs to be taken down because there's, it's still not safe up there. And it was my understanding on that Monday, when Mr. Peabody was up there, that that was one of the first things that they wanted to accomplish was getting that down, so they could be able to look at the building a lot closer. Even that north side needs to come off, so you can see if there's any problems with that north side. And then, here in less than eight weeks, we have the 175th and the Chili Fest. And with having all that traffic up there, we're gonna have to probably change the parade route. Well, we ought to be concerned about the safety of everyone up there, and hopefully there's thousands of people attending this event for that weekend. With knowing that one and a half times, and we're going to, and I'm okay with opening that road, because we need to give the businesses a break up there, because they're already struggling. But are we opening ourselves up to more liability if, for some reason, he's not able to get something done by then?
The answer to your question is yes, and I think in defense of the city, the mayor actually had a conversation with the structural engineer that was here, who was not willing to share his opinion as to whether the building was structurally sound or not, other than to say that if it falls, it's gonna fall all the way over the road. That's why the barricades are there, why the mayor put those there, because that was the information put out. Until a structural engineer says to the contrary, or you hire your own to say something, you've got to protect the general public. I mean, you gotta weigh that risk as to whether or not, it's an inconvenience to the adjoining businesses, but you also have the general public gonna be there. So, if the building would collapse, it looks like it would collapse all the way across the road, and as you say, one and a half times. So, where do you put the barricades until you get somebody in there to start cleaning up the mess and taking the stuff that's hanging there with the straps and so forth? There's a huge risk here, so I don't think I would open up the barricades tomorrow until you get some realistic comfort zone that is not gonna fall down some more. I mean, that's what you're running up against here, folks. And yes, it is a problem for the businesses. They need to thrive, but the people that come to those businesses are also maybe endangered or at risk if that, if you're saying, I didn't know bricks were still falling down.
That's what I'm being told.
That kinda suggests that it's not very stable.
Well-
So-
But it only takes one or two more to keep falling. If you look where that one piece of metal is missing, you can see the bricks up there loose. I mean, it's right there, you know?
And I'm not so, as much as, and I know Mr. Park has wanted to cooperate, but query whether or not he was gonna be allowed to share that structural engineering opinion. Now, we've talked to your carrier, Gary McNeely, who has handled a number of these over his years of practice, and as he reported to us, that most likely, these engineers are gonna come back and they won't give you a definitive opinion. You know, they're gonna cover themselves. They're gonna say, well, there's a risk, and to be careful, this is what you ought to do. So, you're not gonna have maybe an easy answer. But you might wanna get your own structural engineer. He's allowing you to have someone go look at it. But there is a risk out there, gentlemen, no doubt. And the more you stick your hands into it, the more you're opening yourselves up to the liability, but I understand too-
But we don't have any choice.
You have no choice. You wanna help the community.
Alderman Walters?
Yeah, thousands of people come here in eight weeks. I think that's something to-
Your city attorney is correct, and the more that we try to do or start to do on our own as a city, the more involved we get without permission from the insurance company that are gonna say, that's on your pocket.
Right.
So, if we wanna move some stuff around, if we wanna clean up some debris, we wanna do anything whatsoever. Right now, we have overtime costs for the fire department, for the street department, and of course, we can submit that, but don't hold your breath ever getting it reimbursed for any of that. Also, the fee for the machine from Urban Rental to take that aluminum off the front, we can submit all that we want. But if that wasn't okayed ahead of time with the insurance company, good luck, fellows.
Well, in my opinion, we have, again, the large event coming here in less than eight weeks. And I don't know that we can make a motion tonight. I would think so, because this is an item agenda. But I would like to see us bring in a structural engineer as soon as possible, so that we can be able to find out whether or not this building is structurally safe. We've got thousands of people coming, and we need to make sure that this community is safe.
I mean, again, that might be a prudent thing to do. And again, Rocky's right. I mean, this is, there's obviously no easy answers. You have to think beyond this. Again, if what the one insurance agent told me, adjuster, if there's truth that that building is not a lot different than other buildings on the square, then you have the same situation potential for many of the buildings up there. Now, the problem is you bring in a structural engineer, and he makes that known, it comes back to this ignorance is bliss thing. Once you're aware of that, you know, then there's some onus on the building owners to take care of that problem, and you can quickly get into catch twenty-two, where they say, okay, well, I can't afford to take care of it. Guess what? I'm gonna have to leave the building. And the vacancy rate could skyrocket up there. So, there is no easy answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Heavely, and then Alderman Vota.
I think for timeliness, and it seems like probably we are not going to hear from their structural engineer on a timely basis anyway, timely enough for us to make a decision on whether or not to open the streets. I'd like to see us get a structural engineer in to tell us if it would be possible to open the streets, if there was any imminent danger of the rest of the building collapsing, or any portion of that building collapsing, to where at least we could have an educated guess on, okay, it's all right to open up some of the streets. But perhaps they could guide us in that direction.
Let me ask, if I may ask, Dustin, would you be open to that? Again, I mean, it's on the city dime as far as the engineer cost.
I am totally fine with whatever you guys-
But to piggyback off what Alderman Walters has said, you need to get the consent of his insurance company and his structural engineer, because they're gonna, and they'll at some point make a decision under the terms of their policy, and I don't know what kind of policy he's got, I haven't seen it, whether or not, based upon the policy limits that he has, if it's gonna cost more to repair than what the fair market value of it is immediately prior to the fall, they're probably gonna be paying that lower amount. And if we're in there moving things around, or, and I suppose, I'm not a structural engineer, but if I have to move something around to test it and see whether or not how sound it is, that may interfere with their assessment of what they're gonna pay Mr. Park. So, we gotta get, we gotta work with them. You just can't go in there and start, you know, moving things on our own. I think you're opening yourself up.
The more questions I have, if I hire a mason to come in and start shoring and cleanup, doesn't that then put the onus on the mason's, you know, knowledge of and how to shore? Shoring is stabilizing every layer, every floor, all the bricks that are falling to secure everything. I mean, that's what shoring is. So, wouldn't that put the onus, if my insurance company says we need to get it shored, which that's number one, they pushed it, let's get it done? You know, I just got to him today, you know? Wouldn't that then put it back on me, my insurance and my, and the city? That's just my opinion, and if you give me any-
I think from, again, from the city's point of view, as far as protecting ourselves from liability, we just have to have somebody with some credentials we can point to that says, you know, we did the prudent actions. You know, that's what we're after, right, Rocky?
That's right, exactly.
So-
I would think, you know, their life is on the insurance.
Sure.
Once you hire, once you hire them, then that's on, that's on the contractor to be safe. And our engineers that told them it was okay to start the building.
Sure, sure.
Start rebuilding.
Sure. Well, and I think the thing we're obviously looking for, that the business owners, is answers as soon as possible that make sense. And again, if this perimeter, for example, what you're talking about of shoring up, if it turns to be a six-month-
Shoring, shoring is gonna take a week or two. Getting that, getting all that shored and everything, that's a week or two. The mason said to tear down, and, you know, he's gonna, he's ripping all the tin off the building. He's gonna, you know, same and everything. He says probably two to three weeks to tear it off, you know, everything is loose, and he said probably three to four weeks, you know, something like that to rebuild. So, that's what the mason told me. I mean, rough numbers don't hold me to nothing to give the, you know, what you're asking.
We up here are familiar with how the state works, so it's hard for us to even rationalize those as being real numbers, but- Did I see them a hand up here? Alderman Vota, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple issues. Structural engineer, you've already got one that is working in association with your insurance company, is that correct? Okay, so now we've got one structural engineer looking at this, whether he gives a plus or minus, hands up, thumbs up, thumbs down, doesn't matter. Whatever he comes back with, and if we hire a structural engineer through the city to come back and do the same exact thing, and they don't agree, now we're in litigation. Okay, we've got, we're opening up a can of worms that I don't think we need to open up right now. I think we need to come back and see what his structural engineer is gonna say. If his insurance company is not gonna settle with him with the amount that he needs, the building's gonna have to be raised, okay? Bottom line. Now, my question is, if that's the situation we end up with, that we have to raise the building, what window of time are we gonna be looking at, once that decision is made, that that building will be down, and that corner will be, again, be safe? Or will this be something that, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna have to take it down, but we can't get to it for six months? You know, my thing is if we find out that it's not safe, or that it is safe, but you can't financially pursue the rebuild or restructuring, then we have to look at, gentlemen, what are we doing? If we're not gonna repair the building, and we expended the funds to go out and get another structural engineer to look at this, and we're still not gonna build the building, now what do we do? I mean, I can't support getting another structural engineer until we get a report from his insurance company and that structural engineer.
Alderman Walters?
The one thing that our city attorney talked about, gentlemen, from past experience, is that, and I say this nicely to Mr. Clark, once you've got the insurance company involved, they now own the building. And I'm saying that nicely. You own the building, but they're involved. So, if we're gonna do anything whatsoever, we have to get- You own the building, but they're involved. So if we're gonna do anything whatsoever, we have to get permission, as the city attorney did, from their structural engineer, their insurance company, as well as Mr. Clark to even enter the property. And at that point, that, if we do hire an engineer, that's on our dime. We'll never get reimbursed for that.
Right.
And also, based upon the amount of coverage that's on the building, if it even has to be razed or tore down for the public's benefit of that, that word, if it has to be tore down, they're only gonna still pay so many dollars, and the rest is gonna be on Mr. Clark.
Alderman Heberly.
Yeah, the, the only reason that, that I mentioned the structural engineer and the city hiring was for the timely opening and the safety of opening up the streets, period. Um, I would think that we could get an answer from someone that we hired much quicker than we're gonna get an answer from his insurance company. Whether it's the end of the week or two weeks from now, or three weeks from now, and I don't know if we'll ever hear exactly what his structural engineer is telling him anyway. But, but I think that if there's any talk of opening this, these streets anytime soon, we're gonna have to have someone tell us that we hire, that it's safe to open them to this point. But, and, and not necessarily to evaluate the whole building, just evaluate the possibility of opening up the streets.
Your honor, one other comment. We've been talking all this evening about the insurance companies and insurance agents. I just want for the record to know that I personally know Mr. Jeff Peabody. He's a great agent, and Country Companies is a good company. So we're not saying anything against the agent or the company. It's just the process that we have to go through.
Okay, I think we've, we've kinda, Alderman Dorst has.
Tree?
Only trees up there, right? One in the building.
Well, I would agree with Martin Godeau, and I don't think that, um, I don't think the city ought to be getting involved with the, with the structural engineer. The reason I say that is that I think that, uh, and I'm not an engineer, but, uh, that, that's a, that would be a big task. Um, I think you'd have to do a lot of hands-on. I think you're gonna have to be doing some removal of, of stuff that's there, bricks, mortar, whatever. And I think, um, i- if I were, if I were an engineer working for the city, um, I would, I would rather err on the safe side. So I'm, I'd be more inclined to find that that building's got a problem than not have a problem. I think my, my opinion would be jaundiced because of that. And I'd be, I, I would not go over there looking to say everything's fine, and then his engineer, uh, says that it's not fine, and now you've got a difference of opinion. And it's just like an appraisal. It's one person's opinion, and the proof is in the pudding. Um, I think you're, you're gonna have to prove, somebody's gonna have to prove that that's safe, absolutely safe, before they can go forward. And the other thing is that you talked about, um, they're gonna, they're gonna have to take down everything on the outside if they're gonna put in concrete blocks. Mr. Walters said it's gotta be on its, its zero lot line, so you, you can't go over that line. But you can, you can move it in. You can move those blocks in, I would think.
There is actually, that is, they're gonna re- rebuild what's missing.
Right. And so I would agree, you're gonna stay on your property. But I think i- if, if, when it's all said and done, you know, the bottom line's gonna be whether it's, whether it's structurally, uh, safe or unsafe, the bottom line's gonna be whether they're gonna provide you with enough money to be able to, to rebuild that building. So it may come down to, it doesn't make any difference whether the thing is safe or not, doesn't make any difference. If you don't have the money, it's gonna come down anyway. So why not? We, I mean, I, the, I understand time is of the essence in our minds. But those, those engineers, they could care less that we're gonna be celebrating anything around here, okay? I'll guarantee you, that's not gonna be entered in, into their job. They're gonna do whatever they have to do to make sure that when they've inspected that building, they're gonna take their time, and they're gonna make sure they're right, doing the right thing. They're not gonna let anything else bother them, uh, for them doing their job. That's my opinion.
I think the, the only decision.
One, one comment.
Go ahead, Alderman Jones.
Uh, I've, I've been sitting here, I've been listening to everything. I mean, there's been a lot of good points been made. The thing is, Mr. Clark has been very transparent with us so far. Uh, I think that he's going to continue to be transparent with us. He's already got part of the work done. He's pursuing this with vigor right now. Let's, let's give him a chance to, to prove himself. And he said if he gets something, that we're gonna know. And I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold you to that, you know, as far as this council, we're, we're gonna hold you to that. Uh, I don't wanna see him, I don't wanna see any litigation going on because he doesn't need to be spending money and worried about spending money on lawyers when he needs to have the, all the money to rebuild the building if possible. So I just say, let's give him a chance. We're gonna have another meeting in two weeks anyway. We should know something by that time. I, at least I hope so. And I really don't wanna expend any more money than what we have with everything else that we've got going on right now. And that, especially with hiring a structural engineer, and it may take him two weeks to get something done.
We've kicked this around for quite a while now. What I'd like to do is open it to, to the public, if I could, and we have to do anything, or adapting a motion, okay? I would just ask the building owners out there, if there's something, a comment you would like to make or a question you would like to ask, please just, just give your name, you know, for the record, and then, Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Brad Bone, and we own the building right next to Dustin. Um, and the barricade is set up just, I mean, um, outside of our business. And I think, Mr. Walters, you had said, your proposal was to move it to the south end of his building, which would open, open up, uh, the area in front of, uh, in front of my business. What I would like to request is not so much open up the street, but if you folks could just open up the sidewalk just to the other side of my front door as a compromise, so that people could come in. Um, you know, I would like to just request that. I certainly appreciate that.
And, and then I'll throw that back to the city attorney. I mean, unfortunately, that comes back to the situation there again. How much, what level of risk do we take? I mean, again.
It's a risk.
His building is obviously within the theoretical fall zone of the, of the building. Uh, I don't know that we have any control over an individual's property. We can say you can't use our sidewalk to get to your building, but if he decides to open, take the risk himself and get in there some way, then, you know, we, we can't tell him, guess what, your business is closed, can't we?
No, but it is a risk thing. And keep in mind too, you would think Mr. Parks Insurance Company likewise wants to shore it up and make it safe because if it does fall down, it's gonna increase their liability to the general public, whoever they damage the property. We start moving things that if it does come down, yeah, and we've been told that, you know, if, if we see it, we may be included in that lawsuit because we have moved that barricade to accommodate one business. And when we, when it's right within the falling of the bricks, the company's gonna look to us.
Okay, if I could just kind of.
It's just what's gonna happen.
The idea about this building is, uh, Bolinda's, uh, the shoe store, and then the tattoo bar, okay? There, basically what they have is a beam going across, okay, on each one. There's, there's two beams set here, two beams set over here on the, on the different, on the different, uh, building, okay? All the brick is tied together and ran up, okay? What happened was, this, this beam over here fell down, okay? Underneath the pillars, it went down. This side over here is intact, everything is good. So anything that's fallen is on the, on the tattoo side, and it was just, there, there's a, above there, there was an archway, two windows, two. They're going down, and they fell down, and some bricks at the top, on the third floor, where the, there's like a, kind of like a, an office on, on the very top. That's what has stayed. And the other day, whenever, whenever they pulled that, the ratchets and everything, there was some bricks sitting on a two-by-four. And that's the bricks that fell the other day, or is falling right now. Structurally, the masons that came in, they are not concerned with. They're gonna obviously work on the, you know, the pillar going up, but that whole side is actually intact and, and not a threat to, uh, fall. Okay? I'm just kinda giving you an idea. This side over here, that fell because of the beam that was holding that side up. But this side over here is still intact and, and, so I'm just kind of.
Sure. And, and I appreciate that.
Of how it is constructed and, you know.
I, I, I think the only thing missing there is if you had the credential of structural engineer behind your name, then, then we'd be okay, and we'd say, sign here. So, you know.
Well, that, that, that's the thing. If Mr. Parks can get his company to release a report from the engineers and the masons, if they put in a bid to you that states that it's structurally sound and so forth, then you've got something better to make a decision on about moving some of these barricades. But right now, you don't have anything. So we need to have him get something to us. Uh, he's got the bid you said came in today?
The shoring, the shoring and cleanup.
So you've turned that over to your company?
I turned it over.
And have they given any indication when they're gonna either up or down it?
Well, I mean, I, I'm sending in an email, and I know they have not, but that's what they wanted. They, they said, I want that part of it before the, the rest of the rebuilding and everything. Do you wanna get the shoring taken care of? So that is like number one problem, is what we're doing in my, in my jester box. So. I think that's gonna happen fairly soon, so.
Alderman Walters.
I go back to the business owners down there, looking at these buildings, and, and I, I don't wanna speak like I know what's in their back pockets money-wise, but these merchants are hurting. And the longer it goes, the more susceptible they are of going out of business or losing money or the profits margins that they have. And there's at least eight, uh, roughly businesses that are in that close proximity there because of the barricades that are hurting for business. They can't get customers to it. They can't have parking in front. Uh, it's a danger to walk along the sidewalk in front of their buildings and so forth with the barricades and the mess that we have. So again, I'm pleading that we do something to try to help these downtown merchants to be able to survive.
Mr. Hamel.
I'm a structural engineer, but I've done concrete and brick on my, but, uh, there is a chance that you could put scaffolding over them entrances to break it, if it fell down. And, uh, insurance company probably have to care, but, uh, they do a scat on that all the time, do you?
Good point.
To, to, to try.
That, that, that's a good idea. And you're right, I've never been to Chicago when they haven't had those things out.
Good idea.
Anyone else out there like to make a comment?
Yes.
We have a time span, how long we think that's gonna be blocked off? We have no idea.
Again, I, we're hoping, again, we're hoping that we hear something back from them. I'll, I'll throw out two weeks as the extended version, hoping it's shorter than that, and then we get an answer sooner. You know, as, as far, Brad, as far as changing that, again, I, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, you, you almost have to go up there and see. I've, I've actually got a picture here. And again, we're talking about sidewalk carrying and just moving it over. He's open for business otherwise, and so he can't, his, his customers basically have to go under our barricade to get in there. So either we're closing his business down to all his customers, or we're gonna say, you know, take, take your chance.
Yeah, I'm amazed a, a guy carried a forty-pound mirror over that police tape. He wasn't a young man either. I'd have envisioned him kinda hurtling over with it, so. Uh, yeah, you're right. It's, it's even just the tape, it moved twenty feet or something like that. I certainly understand the, the liability aspect of it from that perspective though as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Jones.
One of the other things is, we've got those beautiful sidewalks up there, and we know that we're gonna have some damage, at, at least in front of the tattoo shop. The other areas, in the past, we have, and I know that Dick mandates that whoever, any type of Bobcat or, um, anything, they put sand down, and sometimes they'll cover it with two-by-four, I mean, um, plywood or something like that, regular three-quarter inch construction grade plywood. We may wanna look at something like that too, to try and help prevent any more damage from that happening.
Anyone else? Alderman Kuntz.
I've alluded to that many people, but, you know, it is my opinion, bottom line, beyond inconvenience for businesses, businesses and time cables and all that, that we have, you know, the si- the safety of people, that's the number one thing. You know, some situations just plain suck, and this is one of them.
Yeah.
But the sa- safety is, is the number one.
It's, uh, well, it's, it's, it's obviously just one of those risk management things, and then sometime we're gonna have to roll the dice. But it, it seems like the prudent thing would be us to at least hang on for a little bit longer, giving the, uh, the engineers a chance to get back to us. Uh, we'd ask Mr. Clark, just again, continue what you're, you're doing as far as if on daily basis, you can call them and say, hey, the city's kinda on me wanting to know, you know, when to get an answer. And if you'll work with us on that, we would, we would certainly appreciate that. Sure. And, and then e- maybe even that question, and maybe if you could ask them the question, say, can the city at least know the, uh, buildings adjacent to us? Can, can you give the city something that will allow them to feel good about, uh, moving the barricades to allow people into this? And so maybe if we could even get that much, we could help, help the people, uh, sooner.
Well, I, I think Mr. Hamel's got a good idea with his scaffolding. I think I would invite Mr. Parks to go back to his company and see if that's an option in the interim. Because there's acceptable to lost income claims. And you would think that the company would want to minimize that. And if scaffolding would temporarily be, although they're fixed, allowing the customers to come in there and join businesses, that's something I would suggest to your company.
Idea of, of them paying for the scaffolding?
And the, and the proprietors themselves can talk to their own insurance company because, uh, there is a liability to allow people to come into your business when you know and see a potential risk of, of, of falling debris on your customers' turn biting into it. Do not have any doubt that someone would come into your store and you hit a brick, they're gonna sue you as well. So you might wanna talk to your own insurance company about subsidizing the scaffolding type of situation.
Let me just ask you that question. Who, who's ever asked there, if it's on our sidewalk, what make it, yeah, all of us gonna get sued?
Well, I'm saying, are, are we talking about, should, should the city itself?
Everyone's gonna get sued, right?
As far as the scaffolding, since the scaffolding is over our sidewalks, I guess my question is, should the city step forward and say,
we need to see how much scaffolding costs and, and get it set up up there?
That's a.
Cause if it's our sidewalk, then we have the liability protected. That's why we keep it locked in first place, right?
That's one way of looking at it. Also, you've got a door that you're opening up that's inviting people in. So it, it, it's, everyone wants to chip in.
As soon as, as soon as the shoring, I mean, that, as soon as we get that taken care of, then, you know, we can definitely scaffold. That, that's number one. Jack?
I just wanna ask Elizabeth Lynn Kirby, is it a parking issue for your customers too? The reason why I'm asking is because, you know, in front of City Hall, we have fifteen in the parking.
Is that a?
I, I just have a suggestion that for us as employees, if we can maybe give our, our parking spots where we're at and maybe have us park in our lot, that maybe can help their customers as far as a parking issue. And maybe, you know, the, uh, the cooks at Bill's Toasty, maybe they could park further down because I know they're, they're eight hours a day. Maybe they could just let them park a little bit further away. So more of their customers could park in our spots or across the street from us. Just an idea.
Yeah, I've been having my girls park at First Men Bank. I bank there, so I figure they're not gonna complain that me too much. But, um, now we have no parking on the side, and all I had in front was handicapped in one other space. And of course, my brother gets irritated if any of my people park there, so it's definitely a struggle. My main concern is if we could get a one-way sign out in front of my building on the road, you've got cars, even though there's arrows, it says one lane, but it doesn't say one-way. And so they fly through there, and I would like to not be visited through my building, and something has to turn, so. Even if it was just like one barricade making it know that they can't go straight off the square path to my building, that they can only go down.
What you're talking about, they would make sure in that one lane, you must turn left off the square there. Then, I, I was up there, and there was a couple of them, just, even though it's like, do not enter.
You know what? They don't even pay attention to the, they're coming onto the square, whether there's construction or not, they just straight through.
Right. So even if you, you know, and I have a barricade in the back, I thought about it the other day, but, you know, that's, I don't wanna come through my window.
And that's, we, 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 we can, that one's one of the easier ones.
Because we spoke before, safety first. I mean, I would hate to hear you complaining about what we're going through. It feels a little something, somebody to feel like after the, the.
You're walking, saying.
All right. And I'll, and I'll just reiterate, you know, safety is.
And I'll, and I'll just reiterate, you know, safety is first, but, you know, for my, my point of view too, urgency is big. If we have to move this celebration until it cuts, I'm aware, I'm not sure where we'd go, but it just wouldn't have the, the hometown on the square field.
Well, I might get feeling that, and we will still put it on the square, even if we have to put all the three-quarters of it.
I was thinking, since we've already got a barricade installed, we could, here concession.
It's not on the agenda.
I think I can add to that. I was bigger.
Alderman Pedlin.
The, the current barricades are up there, who, who put them there? Who said these go there?
We did, and, and, and I told Dick, I said, let's put them up here. I mean, it was just, with no knowledge.
So we put them there, so we could move some of them to some extent without increasing any...
Well, but it was based on the conversation you had with the structural engineer. Basically said, you got three stories buildings, so you, you figure out yourself how far it goes if it comes down.
Well, and technically, it was, uh, even further based on that, but it was, it was that conversation along with, hey, we gotta live here, and, you know, so, you've got to keep one lane open.
And, you know, I wanna say, we don't get a lot of people coming downtown, any small community, one and through the big buildings. I'm all for just trying to make this work. Time is perfect for, for a lot of us.
Okay, we need to kinda bring this to a close, but it doesn't look like we're gonna make any motions right now. Uh, I think we'll put it on the agenda for the, for that city council meeting, and, and give an update at that point. Uh, the only other thing I'd say, put in your mind is, you know, we, we said, no, we didn't wanna hire another engineer at this point, and I understand that to a certain degree, but we, we have a history, this capital has a history unfortunately, of, if they don't give us the answer we want, we go to somebody else. Uh, and we, we had a situation not too long ago, where we rescued about four or five attorneys, but they weren't giving us the answer we wanted to hear, and I could see that same thing possibly happen. The engineers, it wasn't... I don't agree with that, so...
Well, we just need an answer, though. I mean, right now, we don't have any answers.
Somebody, yeah, somebody would just point fingers to you, yeah. He said we could, so... All right, let's, uh, let's move on. Um, read the next thing out of the matters part, uh, sheet, sheet. Okay, per se, paragraph G of five ILCS one-twenty slash two-point-oh-six, this portion of the city council meeting, the deserve for any person wishing to address the council, and any relevant subject matter concerning the city. I do have one lady, I've heard she's very patient, and she called me and would like to address us, and was, Teresa Paul, would you please stand up and address the council? Your concern?
Hello, Teresa Paul, I'm, um, my reason for being here is I'm a parent, and, um, I get emotional, yes. Um, my son dealt with something at junior high three years ago because he was bullied, and he did not share with me to the extent that he was bullied. And he took matters into his own hands, and, um, he, uh, made it possible for him to be expelled, so he would not be bullied anymore. And that's quite a hardship for all my family because, um, I did not think safety needed to go to, um, first law school, into an environment where he would be, uh, going to school with other students that had been expelled for bad behavior, bullying, other reasons, I don't know. So I put him in that vision, and he did very well there, um, there was other issues that were, um, helped his organization, his socialization, things were very well there. Uh, he finished his freshman year at the high school last year, everything went well, and he's a sophomore. He has told me that he thinks I'm crazy, and he doesn't want me doing what I'm doing, but I am concerned for other students, especially the junior high population, and just because my son's no longer going to school there, doesn't mean that the issue's gone away. The good news is the state of Illinois recently passed some laws this summer on, uh, taking care of bullying, that it is now, um, ed- educators, even janitor, if they see it, they have to report it to DCFS. That just passed this summer. And then last week, a, a law was signed into law by the governor, that if there's any, um, bullying or harassment via electronic devices, be computer, electronic email, cell phone, there, it's punishable by law, and it doesn't matter if they're minors, it's punishable. So, um, and that happens outside of school hours, and, um, thankfully, I, I don't even want my son on Facebook, I think it's a waste of time, and, um, it's just, it opens up a whole other realm of stuff, you know, gossip and all that. So anyway, um, I had, um, been just looking for other things, um, what, what was out there as far as, uh, what to see at train and generals office, which the state of Illinois do, and, um, then there's this movie, it's a documentary movie called Bully, and this, uh, Lee Hirsch is the producer of it. He actually decided to do the documentary because he had been bullied when he was, uh, in school. And, um, it doesn't just follow schools, it goes to colleges, uh, fraternity, sorority, hazing, things like that, and my concern is, just when we're out of school as a society, as a community, um, and it happens all over the world, you see somebody in trouble, I don't not saying for safety issues, a single woman, I'm not going to pull over and help somebody, call a tire, but I could call nine-one-one and, and call a police officer and say, hey, um, this is such and such, mile marker, somebody needs to go help them. We're too busy as a society when we see trouble happening, our huge, our bystander, and you see somebody being picked on, we just look the other way, and we just mumble, you know, it's not bothering me, it's none of my business. Um, and there's people that when they see something like that, and, um, my son did last year, he says, I didn't care for that student, I don't like him personally, but it's not fair that he was being picked on. So he went to the principal and gave it, you know, as some attention, and then he went back to the principal and he said, did you guys care of that? He says, yeah, that's not happening anymore. So even though my son wasn't involved in it, he went and told somebody about it, and said, that needs to be taken care of. So there is, um, the Bully Project, um, is going on across the United States, and there's actually, you know, Bully Project Illinois, it's a Facebook page, I just started up one for Taylorville. Um, I asked Dorothy Escalas, she's a PhD at U of I, she's gonna come to speak, I don't know if it's before or after the movie, we haven't discussed when, but, um, it's gonna be October twenty-fifth at the Taylormore Hospital Auditorium at five-thirty, and I'm inviting any council member, the mayor, I haven't talked to the city of police, um, and I'm hoping to get the school board involved with the, uh, local PTA, I've talked to Michelle Skolinka, she's gonna talk to superintendent. And basically, we just want to come together as a community to let our students know that if you are a witness to it or, uh, a subject, I, I need to say the word victim, but, um, then you need to talk to an adult, you know, and my son was a scout, he didn't go to scout leader, we're very involved in our church, he didn't go to church member, you know, he told his dad, we're not together, he, his dad just assumed, but you're telling me, you must've told your mother, you know, and, um, so it's, um, and I know it's hard when you're going through the situation to think that anybody would care, you know, or that's not that important, um, I'm not gonna mess with telling anyone. So basically, this movie educates on different situations. Some of it can get pretty deadly, and I don't want anything like that happening here. There's, uh, the older movie is PG thirteen, it's basically for high school students, and there was a student that brought a gun to a bus because she was tired of being picked on. We would never want anything like that to happen, you know, but, um, thankfully, these laws are now being passed, and, um, and if we could just, if the education's good at the elementary level, but something at junior high and high school, it kinda ends there. And it's really hard for our students in junior high because the classrooms, sizes get bigger, there's more students, and it's harder, I think, as a teacher, to even manage your students because you're changing classrooms, and you don't have the same students all day, and I, I understand on that standpoint, and you don't know what happens outside the classroom, you don't know what happens down the hallways, you know? There's a lot of interaction going on between students that teachers don't even know about. Um, so, anyway, I wanted to announce the movie, and if you guys, I'm looking for business sponsors to promote it, like on the radio, and I want to organize a poster, but, um, I was told by school and every, and at once, I was just wait for school to start, and I was like, but it'll be here before you know it, and, you know, and the school year starts and it's, it's end of October, so, but anyway, I wanted to announce that, and, um, you'll, you'll find it on Facebook, and I appreciate if you like it, and then, again, if anybody wants to help me and the PTA and anything like that, you can, you can hold the name against them.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? All right, thank you for your interest. Anyone else out there wanna address the council? See, no further items on the agenda, entertain motion adjourned this meeting. And Boden, take it, Charles, Alderman Walters, discussion comment. Here you now, all in favor? Aye. Begins, motion passes, meeting adjourned eight thirty-nine PM.